All right, folks, here we go. Welcome back. We are getting started back from our break. Thank you, everybody, coming back on time. We're going to get started with public hearings. First up is item AC 1917. Mr. Melendez, I'm going to turn this over to you to sort of lay the record and get us started.
Thank you, Mr. President, counsel. The issue in this appeal is whether a zone map amendment from MXL to MXM should be approved where the subject site is within an area designated by the comprehensive plan as an area change and also fronts a comp plan designated commuter corridor. That would be the commuter corridor of Paseo del Norte Northwest. The subject site consists of both the southeastern and southwestern corners of Paseo del Norte and Kimick Drive Northwest. It totals about 16 acres. The EPC approved this zone map amendment, finding that it would promote several comprehensive plan policies relating to areas of change and to capturing more intensive uses within and along comp plan designated centers and corridors. The EPC specifically found that the ZMA was appropriate based on policy that directs more auto-oriented uses toward, available within the MXM zone toward commuter corridors like Paseo del Norte. The land use hearing officer reviewed the decision of the Environmental Planning Commission and determined that the EPC's decision is supported by the record and the findings. With respect to the MXM zone, the IDO itself does indicate that MXM zoning is appropriate for the type and scale associated with centers and corridors such as Paseo. Accordingly, the Lujho recommends that the appeal be denied, that the EPC be affirmed, and the zone map amendment should be approved. Tonight, you're considering whether to accept or reject that recommendation of your land use hearing officer. If you have questions about the hearing officer's recommendation, I'll do my best to answer those from the record. You will not hear from the parties tonight. If you feel like you need to have more argument on this matter, you may reject the land use hearing officer's recommendation, in which case we can have a full hearing at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Melendez. Counselors, questions? Counselor Brigado, you want to get us started, and then Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Specifically, what I would like to ask is with regard to the MXL and the MXM zones. And I would like to know what uses are allowed in each of these zones.
Madam President, I'm sorry, Mr. President, getting that correct. Mr. President and Counselor Borego, there is a discussion of that in the record, specifically in the staff report from the planning department. So I'll refer to that if you give me just a second to get to that page. So the record at page 106 discusses notable differences between the MXL and MXM zone. And it discusses that within the MXM zone, general retail medium is permissive because the MX zone is intended for medium intensity mixed uses. And what that means is that retail establishments up to 50,000 square feet would be available as uses within the MXM. There are also more auto-oriented uses that are permissive within the MXM zone. However, because of this particular site's proximity to residential zoning nearby, most of those uses would be conditional, including light vehicle fueling station, for example. Liquor retail is also permissive in MXM, however, that would also be a conditional use. And there would be an opportunity to go before the zoning hearing examiner to evaluate the harms of that use before it would be permissive at this location. So in general, as compared to the MXL zone, the footprint of the commercial that would be available is slightly larger, and you have the availability of auto-oriented uses, although many of them would be based on a conditional use permit.
And MXM?
Madam President, so, let me clarify. I was drawing a distinction between the MXL zone and the MXM zone. So the MXL zone would allow uses that were only up to 10,000 square feet in footprint. That's small-scale retail. MXM zone would allow medium-scale retail of up to 50,000 square feet. The MXL zone would not permit specifically many of the auto-oriented uses that are available within MXM. So MXM does offer the larger footprint, and it does offer many of the auto-oriented uses.
So from a, I guess, from a land use perspective, the MXL is a little more intense than, in terms of commercial uses, and the MXM is more of a neighborhood-oriented commercial use? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Madam, Mr. President, Counselor Borego, I think you've got it just flipped. So the MXL is more of the lower-intensity neighborhood, and the MXM is the more medium. So I think your analysis is exactly right, but your labels need to flip.
Neighborhood-oriented. And what about heights?
Madam President, again, sorry, Mr. President, old habits, apologize. Mr. President, Counselor Borego, the MXL zone permits a maximum building height of 35 feet as a general matter. The MXM zone permits a maximum building height of 45 feet. That said, this particular area is subject to a view protection overlay that would limit the availability of some colors and materials to help enhance and protect the views, and also impose pretty significant height limitations, at least on one of the parcels as it's currently platted.
Is there a restriction in terms of distance from open space?
Mr. President, Counselor Borego, not as it would apply to this particular parcel. The comprehensive plan does express policies that are intended to help preserve open space and protect and buffer our valuable open space areas, particularly the petroglyph monument, which is nearby. The IDO talks about that particular issue in terms of properties that are located within 330 feet. There are special design and review criteria for property that is within 330 feet of open space. This particular property, at its closest point, is closer to 600 feet. It's about 580 feet away from a portion of the petroglyph national monument to the south. It's separated within that 600 feet by property that is zoned for low-intensity multifamily zoning.
So this property does not fall into that view protection corridor, correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Borego, it does not fall into the special review criteria for being proximate to open space, but it does fall into the view protection overlay for the northwest escarpment.
And what exactly is the protection of the view protection corridor?
Mr. President, Counselor Borego, that would include the architectural limitations with respect to, for example, reflective materials, the nature of the colors that would be permissive, the placement of rooftop mechanical equipment, all intended to enhance the visual aesthetic of the area. And also, the southeast corner is, as mapped right now, is impacted by a pretty significant height limitation, height-restricted area as part of that northwest view protection overlay area.
And what is the height for that?
Mr. President, Counselor Borego, that view protection height-restricted area limits buildings to a maximum height of 15 feet.
15 feet. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the sake of discussion. If we do not like to move to accept the Lujho's recommendations and findings.
Thank you. I have motion in a second on the floor. Counselor Benton?
Mr. Melendez, your staff write-up mentions that part of the EPC's and the Lujho's findings were that were related to the areas of change, and specifically the Paseo del Norte commuter corridor. And I guess, surprised I don't remember what that corridor designation means. A commuter corridor is, I mean, it's a corridor, obviously. But where does that fall on the spectrum of corridor, like major transit corridors? We know that that was a big debate on the west side with regard to Coors Boulevard and so forth. But where does that fall on the spectrum of corridors?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, that designation is more a label related to major transportation corridors that are presently auto-oriented and auto-dominated, related to the passage of vehicles related to a commute, to get to services or to get to employment. Paseo del Norte, within this area, does have an enhanced transit overlay, which means that although it is presently designated as, as more limitedly, this commuter corridor with an auto-oriented focus, that the future plan for that is, once the service and the stops come in place as that area grows, that it will have enhanced transit as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Brigado?
Mr. Chair, I realize we have a motion on the floor. Can I make a second motion?
You can make an amended motion, I guess. We can carry the first motion first, right?
I would move to reject the Lujho recommendation.
We would need to dispose of the motion.
Yeah, we need to dispose of the motion on the floor unless you have an amendment to it, which is not really an option for this one, but.
We can't have two motions on the floor.
We have to get rid of this one, then we can move to the other one, unless the original sponsor withdraws her motion.
Well, can I add some additional comments?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. I have some questions regarding policies from the IDO and the comp plan relating to open space that I'd like to cite, which I have talked about, our natural resources, protecting significant cultural landscapes, relating to public right-of-ways, relating to protecting the monument. And I would, the first comment that I'd like to make is, I think the comprehensive plan identifies Unser and Paseo as a, I'm sorry, what?
Mr. President, Counselor Borego, it's an urban center.
Urban center. And also, Unser, I mean, Paseo and Universe as an urban center, is that correct?
Mr. President, Paseo and Universe, I don't have it off the top of my head. I don't doubt that it's a center. I don't think it's an urban center. Urban center is reserved for the most intensive.
If it's not an urban center, it's the next step down.
Maybe an activity center.
So I just wanted to cite some relevant policies relating to open space that I'd like the council to consider. And this may be that we want to do a full-blown public hearing on this, but Goal 4.1, Policy 4.5, Policy 4.5A, Goal 11.3, Policy 1131B, Policy 1131C, Policy 3.4B, Policy 3.4C, and Policy 3.4G. And these are all basically designed, policies that are in the, in the plans that are designed to protect our open space. And what my concern is, is the intensity of development that could occur eventually at this particular, and I'm just going to visualize this for you, because we don't have any maps available, apparently. But maybe this is, these are good reasons for us to go to a full-blown public hearing on this. As you're driving up Paseo, and you go past golf course, you go through the escarpment. And as you're driving the escarpment, it's, you know, very pristine area that has been protected. As we made our way through this transportation corridor, the next stop is Kimick, and there's a light already at Kimick. And right, currently, the only way you can turn is going south on Kimick. And there's a lot of residential subdivisions that are being developed in there adjacent to public open space. Some of them are more west, but there is the potential for a lot of development to occur that is probably residential in nature. I think, and I realize these are conditional uses, but there are some, some commercial uses that are probably allowed openly in the MXL zone, that if you drive up the escarpment, probably the last thing you want to see is just, you know, a gas station. I mean, or some, some other more intense commercial use that, across the street from Kimick and the light is open space. And so, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering if that's the direction that our city really wants to go in? And I'm a little surprised to hear that the planning commission, you know, I mean, and maybe we want to send this back to the planning commission, I don't know. But I think there are some policies in place that could, you know, be maybe further considered, because I don't think the, the, I mean, this is an important gem to the city. We have, and I, I think, it's been a while, but I Googled to see how many visitors come to Albuquerque just to go to the, you know, petroglyphs. And it's significant. It's, you know, in the 30,000 a year kind of range, or even higher than that probably now, because this was two, this was a couple of years ago when they recorded it. So I, I worry that if we approve this, then the next thing is if we don't have really organized neighborhood associations in this area, that we're going to be infringing on, you know, areas that should be preserved and protected, and more residential in nature. And also with lighting. I mean, that's another thing that's really important, is, you know, and Counselor Penya talked about her lighting in her area, but, you know, all you have to do to go up there is jump the fence to be in the, in a very protected area, federally protected area. And we're looking at commercial development that is a little more intense than, you know, and maybe as a council down the line, we also want to consider expanding our protected, our protected zones. I mean, you know, because 300 feet is not that far, if you think about it. So those are just some comments.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Melendez, I want to do a follow-up question real quick before I go back to Counselors, who already had a comment, unless you want to respond to that first.
Mr. President, the only thing that I want to make sure is clear, because I wasn't exactly clear about which street was being referenced as far as open space across the street. To the north of Paseo del Norte, it is undeveloped, but that area is zoned for a non-residential business park, so it's not anticipated that it's going to be open for the long term. It's anticipated that growth will occur there across the street.
Mr. Melendez, on a process question, if the council were to want to revisit our open space rules and our buffer zones, et cetera, nonetheless, this appeal or this question would have to be decided under the rules and the, sort of underway at the time the application was made. Is that right?
Mr. President, I couldn't have not have said it better. That's exactly right.
I'll yield to Counselor Benton.
Counselor Benton?
I think, you know, this is an interesting case. I wanted to, I wanted to ask, this most likely, I'll ask Mr. Melendez, and feel free to decline, but, but the, most likely, this was a zoning conversion from C1, I would imagine.
Mr. President, I don't know exactly, but certainly MXL is about the appropriate conversion, all other things being equal.
Typically, I think that's right, that, you know, the original zoning was anticipated neighborhood-scale commercial as opposed to something like C2. If I'm not mistaken, gas station, in the old zoning code, we're not allowed under C1.
Mr. President, I think, yeah, I don't remember, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly, but I think that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I sort of agree that this is a, it is, along the corridor, it was designated as an area of change. I can understand that. But I, I think it's, there are enough factors within this case that I'd be inclined to oppose the motion and hear the case.
Counselors, other questions? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I don't have a problem with the new conversion, because it is commercial and it is not heavy commercial in any way. It will not have high traffic within it. It's going to be more like neighborhood stores, which is what, once a place like this develops, they want to have access to neighborhood stores. You know, everybody wants their Chick-fil-A and, and drive-through Walgreens and, and all of that. But if it is the will of this council, I will withdraw my motion and hear what anyone else wants to say.
Counselor Jones, so the motion is still on the floor for the accept Lujho recommendations. Is there other conversation or other questions or the debate? Hearing none?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I thought I heard.
I'm sorry, did you withdraw it? I just didn't miss that. Okay. So there's no motion on the floor. I'm going to go back to Counselor Borego, who wanted to make a motion earlier. Counselor, do you have a new motion?
Yes. Thank you for that. And thank you to Counselor Jones. I think I would love to invite you to come and visit and drive up through, through that area with me, any of the counselors that are interested.
If I may.
Mr. President, counselors, please don't. Let's dispose of this appeal based on the information in the record and limit our consideration to that. Let's, let's limit our consideration in this matter to the information that's in the record and not do any independent investigation.
Oh, yes, no, absolutely. I'm just suggesting that if any counselor would like to visit me up there, that's.
Okay.
So the motion that I would like to make is that we defer this to a full hearing? Is that?
Mr. President, Counselor Borego, it would be to reject the recommendation.
To reject the Lujho's recommendation, and is that it?
And that would create an automatic hearing, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Is there a second for the motion to reject the Lujho recommendations?
Second.
And I hear a number of seconds. The clerk can pick her favorite. Any other discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to reject the Lujho recommendation say yes and raise your hand. All those opposed?
No.
I got 3-3. Is that where I went? So that motion fails. I'm sorry, it was 4-3? All those in favor of the reject, motion to reject, 1, 2, 3, 4, there we go. All right, 4-3. So the council's rejected Lujho recommendations. We need to set this for a full hearing. Do we want to set a date now? We do usually, right? Do you want to do the first?
Mr. President, it'll automatically be our next meeting, first meeting in February.
It's automatic unless we do it otherwise. Thank you. Great. All right. Mr. Melendez, you're going to be back in the hot seat again, because here we go again. Item AC 1918, and this one's a little odd, so I'm going to put you back in the hot seat and ask you to please set us up here just a little bit and give us the background.
Sure. Mr. President, the issue in this appeal is basically where an appeal goes to. It was referred to the city council. However, the city council enacted a resolution last year, R 19150, that would have better directed this to go first to the Environmental Planning Commission. So your staff is recommending that the council refer this to the Environmental Planning Commission for hearing, at least for the initial appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Melendez. To get us started, I'll make a motion to refer to EPC for the initial hearing. And a second from Counselor Benton. Counselors, any other discussion or debate on that item? All those in favor of the motion to refer to EPC, say yes and raise your hand.
Yes.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously for seven. Is that where we are now? Seven and O. Thank you. And moving on, next up are approvals. Counselor Gibson, do you have a motion or request?
Yes, Mr. President. Going to move item H, which is Resolution R 19198. It's a nuisance, substandard dwelling or structure in need of abatement at 2405 Quincy Northeast, Albuquerque, New Mexico, 87110, within the city limits of Albuquerque, New Mexico, is so ruined, damaged, and dilapidated as to be a menace to the public comfort, health, peace, or safety, and that it is to be required to be removed.
And there's a motion to move a due pass.
Move a due pass, right.
And I'll make the second.
I think, I believe we do have some public commenters.
We do, and so we will get started. First up will be Mr. Ron Frazier, followed by Stephen Rowan and Gil Davis. If I call your name, come on up and take those front seats so that we can know that you're here and ready to go. Mr. Frazier, welcome.
Thank you, President and counselors. I'm a neighbor. My address is 2412 Monroe, so Quincy, Monroe. My lot touches that lot. And this is an abandoned building. It's been abandoned for a long time. We had a fire there last year, and the city had to board up the holes. Fire department was too close. They put it out, but they had to cut holes in the wall. It, it is an eyesore. It's a transient attractant. There are needles regularly in our neighborhood. There's a lot of trash. And I would encourage you to please get it out of our hair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Stephen Rowan, followed by Gil Davis and Darren Arnold.
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to hear from us. I'm a neighbor of the subject property, and I just have some concerns about, I guess, the other cost that it's having on the city. We have a lot of police issues in the area. We've had lots of thefts. I've had vehicles stolen and other things on our property. And just wondering, you know, by not tearing the building down, what is it going to cost the city to continue to board it up and continue to put liens on the property and police the area? If we can clear the lot and make way for new progress, I think that's a, a good thing. I'm kind of worried about our, the security of our employees and our customers when they come there, because it's kind of a gathering place for transients and drug users and other, you know, undesirable people that aren't reflecting well on Albuquerque and on our business. So, yeah, I also encourage you to please remove this building and make way for new progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan. Next up, Gil Davis.
Can we hand this out to the counselors?
Our staff will help you with that.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Gil Davis. I'm kind of the flipside of this argument. This has been a problem for over two and a half years when the first paperwork first got signed to condemn this property. And I heard about this in November, because I worked at this radio station in 1974 as a DJ. And I drove by it every once in a while, because it was a historic building to me. So I formed an organization called Save the Station, which our goal is to acquire the property, repurpose it. And in this attachment, I outlined a number of different possible uses that we've had suggested for it, such as a police substation, a Starbucks, urgent care center, an optometrist. Various businesses could be brought in to repurpose this building and preserve this iconic structure. There isn't anything like it in Albuquerque. And it's from a mid-century period, as Thea Haver talked about when she got up earlier, that represents architecture from the 1960s. And Ron Peria, my business partner in this, is going to get up and talk a little bit about it. He's a docent at the Wheels Museum here in town, and also is being recruited by the Albuquerque Museum to be a docent. So he has a lot of history and background. Also here in the room is Cameron Sapien, who's a UNM architecture student devoted to historic preservation. And I've been in contact with UNM in architecture. So what I'm saying is, nobody's been advocating or fighting for this building for the last two and a half years. And now that we became aware of what was going on, I just did, that's what I'm here for, is to advocate that we put a moratorium on knocking this building down so we can acquire it and then repurpose it.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm sorry, Counselor Jones.
Sir, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, come back. Counselor Jones has a quick question.
I do have a question. I have a couple of questions, actually. So you're suggesting the city put a moratorium on this so you can investigate doing another building on it, or rehabbing it?
Well, the current owner has had a lot of issues with family and hasn't had time to address anything with this building. So our goal right now is to acquire the building, get it into our name.
And, sir, have you made an offer on this property?
We're in the negotiations with him right now to buy the property.
Have you made an offer on this property?
We've had discussions with him. We haven't formed the contract paperwork yet.
And if I may, Mr. President, I'm sorry, but, so, do you have the money put together to do this? And how soon would you be willing?
We're working out an arrangement where LLC.
If I may, more. And how soon would you be willing to do this? Because it sounds like the city is spending some money trying to keep it clean and neat.
Well, if the city knocks it down, there will be an additional $25,000 lien, in addition to the $11,000 that are already on the property. And our goal is to get this acquired within the next three to four weeks and have it in our name of the LLC. And then we're, there's actually a plan. a plan that's documented in summary in the back of this handout that I gave you, that is what we're going to do as soon as we acquire the property.
And would you be willing to, if you, if we were to defer this?
Absolutely.
Would you be willing to pledge, as in financial, put up a financial pledge that you will close this, which is not possible to do in three weeks, and have a contract to put...
I have another person who's going to get up and speak in a minute. That's Ron Perea. He's on the list to speak on this.
Okay.
And Ron is handling the real estate and financial aspect of this whole thing.
Okay. And I'm just asking this because you were here before. It's like a month and a half or two months ago.
FICO meeting.
Yeah. And I'm surprised that you didn't make an offer on this property and get it under contract, if you want to do this.
Well, we have been in discussion with the owner, but one of the things we needed to do was stop the demolition of it. Because if we acquire the property and then the city comes in and knocks it down, you've just taken the property value and flipped it completely in terms of what that represents in terms of square footage if the building's gone and turned into a parking lot.
Okay. And if I may offer, Mr. President, and then I'll stop. If you acquired this property and you came to the city and say, "We've acquired this property and we're going to do this, and we can give you a plan, and we promise we'll have something done next time."
We'll come back and report to you.
I promise you that we would not demo it if that plan is in place.
Yeah. Actually, I'll give you one other piece of information. We had a location scout from NBC Universal Studios who came out and looked at the property today to repurpose it for an upcoming series that they want to film, and they're considering this property to do that shooting at.
Okay.
So that would be an interim purpose of it. And then after that, we're looking for an end buyer to repurpose it into a new usage.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you and your partners were going to redo that.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I thought you said that you and your partners were going to maintain it, fix it up, and maintain it and make it up.
The first thing we're going to do is start to, start cleanup, securing the building, getting the permits necessary to put power back in it so we can work on it, and moving towards the goal of repurposing it and finding an end buyer. Within, our goal is to do it within three to six months. But the first thing we need to do is stop the demolition.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. Davis, we last saw you, I last saw you at the FGO meeting, I believe it was the first week of December, December 9th.
Correct.
So that was roughly six weeks ago.
Right.
So if you, you're not under contract with the owner. Have you negotiated, made any negotiations with him? Have you had any serious conversations or negotiations with him in the past six months, or past six weeks? I'm sorry.
We've had about three or four meetings with him to work out the terms of how we would acquire the building. In fact, I just delivered a working proposal to him today so he could review that. And our next goal is to write the contract for us acquiring the building.
Okay. So one other thing is that, so are you looking at purchasing the entire lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Both buildings.
There's the building on the north side of the lot.
Right.
And then there's the problem building at the south end of the lot. So this building has been vacant for, I don't know how many years. It seems like it's been...
I think about three years because the family was running a Venetian blinds business in there. And then they closed the business down, and they didn't do anything else to occupy the building anymore. And that was part of the reason there were so many transients breaking into it and getting it boarded up, was because there was nothing going on in the building, and the owner wasn't doing anything with it.
Right.
And there was nobody advocating to repurpose it or buy it. He wasn't looking to sell it until we approached him.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Mr. Darren Arnold.
Good evening, Council President and Council members. My name is Darren Arnold, and I am with MeTV and Telemundo, which is located at 2400 Monroe Northeast. We're just adjacent to this building, 2405 Quincy. So we're just right on the west side of it. I've been employed with this TV station since 2016. And since that time, myself and coworkers have frequently called the police department, asked for their assistance to come to our place of business because of the theft that's been happening there, the drug issues, individuals urinating in our parking lot, defecating up on our building, in the front of the building, on the side of the building. They've had fires going. I've actually approached one of the individuals that was urinating and asked him and his companions to please leave the premises or I was going to call the police. And so him, and of course, he got belligerent with me. And again, I reinstated that I will call the police. And of course, they bolted right across, where did they go? 2405 Quincy, to that building, where they frequently are there daily. And in the evenings, when I'm getting ready to go home from work, I have to drive by that building. And on a continuous basis, they're out there smoking and drinking. And then one occasion, if I could share with you, one of my coworkers, which became a victim, they broke into her car, stole some of her personal belongings. And we saw that individual take off and go over to that building. So the victim and I proceeded over there to get her belongings back. And the gentleman said, "Oh, I threw the stuff in the building." As I proceeded to go into the building and get her things, I noticed three guys drinking and smoking, and I noticed all kinds of trash and liquor and syringes on the floor. So I was very careful at touching anything. So I ask you this evening to please assist us in getting this building demolished.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, Nancy Gaines, followed by Marina Lavoy and Ronald Perea.
Good evening, Mr. President, Councilman. My name is Nancy Gaines, and I am employed with Raymar Communication. And I have been there for six and a half years, which is adjacent to the building at 2405 Quincy Northeast, which hasn't been abandoned the whole time I've been there. I'm present here today to ask you to tear down that building. During my almost seven years with Raymar, I have witnessed repulsive activity, such as drug use, that I'm looking down into our second floor, right into, watching them. Drug use, needles, they're doing spoons with fire or whatever, I don't know, all that stuff. And there, too, as far as pipes, it's indecent exposure. There's defecation of the groups that are there as individuals, and right in open. I used to come in early every morning to start my day before everybody got in, and I had to stop that because it was becoming dangerous. I walked in one morning, they had broken in the building. I hadn't noticed that. And thank God that one of the employees upstairs, the gentleman, one of our employees, was there, and I called him down. And he went through the building. And this is just one of several times that they've broken into our building. On another occasion, they've camped out in the afternoons. I've had to leave the building through one of our entrances. They've been drugged out leaning up against our door. I've had to ask one of the employees, male employees, to escort them out. I'm asking you for our peace of mind and safety to please tear down this building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. Marina Lavoy?
I have a picture.
I have a handout here for the council chairs.
I'm not quite sure how to make this one. Okay. This is the building in discussion.
Mr. President, counselors, my name is Marina Lavoy. I am the general manager for Telemundo and MeTV, and we are, again, in the building just west of this property. We, there's only a fence between us that we have put up. I am also here to ask that you please consider demolishing this building, as I have to experience many unfortunate situations with the people that are breaking into this building and creating criminal behavior. Our trouble with 2405 Quincy started about seven years ago. In the summer of 2013, several break-ins occurred, which evidently does to believe that the people that are staying in this property, in this vacant building, committed it. We have spent a lot of money to keep our property, and most important, our employees safe. To increase security, we have added a fence, a wooden cedar fence inches away from an already existing chain-link fence to block the view into the rear of our building. However, that didn't solve the problem. We've had four additional break-ins after that. And later, that wooden fence became firewood for some of those folks, one section at a time. The break-in stopped only after we invested $12,000 plus to have the back window, the windows in the back of our building completely stuck it over. And then we installed security bars on the remaining windows. But then the unofficial residence of this vacant building at 2405 Quincy became a larger problem with many of the occurrences that you've already heard. The owners, with the owner's permission, we have paid many times to remove brush and at the same time have people collect needles by the tens and twenties. We have now completed a wrought iron fence all around, all around our entire building at the cost of $46,000, again, for the safety of our employees. However, we are prisoners in our own property because the source of the problem remains.
Thank you, Ms. Lavoy.
Okay.
I know you have your packet and counselors have it. They can ask you some follow-up questions if we need to later. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ronald Perea, followed by Brad Moran and Tad Nemensky.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, fellow Burquenios. My name is Ron Perea. I am a historian by nature, and that is why I got involved in this building in the first place, because I saw the historical events. Plus then, I am a real estate investor. So I saw the numbers involved. So we've met with the owner, and I was, I just met with him for the first time three weeks ago. And so I was told that of this pending chambers meeting, and so we are in the processes of trying to put together the agreement. And we're under the gun to do so. And so we're at the fact where, well, as a real estate investor, I can bring in the hardcore investment necessary to do what we're going to do. Within a month, I will have a security fence all the way around the building. And also, whatever needs to secure to our neighbors' satisfaction. Also, that place will be cleaned out within, I'd say, by February. We've already got potential repurposers, candidates, who'd like the building and take it over. My hard money, by the way, is going to come from hard-nosed investors. We have institutional bonds ready to tap once we're going. Bottom line is, we're going to take care of all the bills of that structure. There's $11,000 current owed to the city, and $25,000 will be more you guys are going to have to pay if you level it. You won't have to worry about that. We'll take care of it. In other words, bottom line, ladies and gentlemen, we'll put our wallet where our mouth is. Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
One question. Are you willing to sign a binding agreement with the City of Albuquerque that you will do all of that within an X time or have a monetary penalty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Because we've done a lot of our homework already.
If you will give your information to council staff up here, we will see, we are right here, one of these ladies, just your contact information.
Okay.
We'll consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Perea, hang on just a second. Counselor Hassan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for clarification, Mr. Perea, is it the intention, when purchasing this property, to end up changing the architecture of it completely or just restoring it?
First, we have to restore it, and then we'll leave it up to the end user to design it the way they would like to. We've got several candidates. They're going to require a different kind of design. So that end, that's going to be answered by whoever will be the eventual repurposer of the property. I like to refer to it as our end buyer. We are the buyer. Whoever we sell it to will be the end buyer.
So it could change in complete architectural structure by the end?
No. We're going to keep that as a requirement in our bylaws and the purchase agreement. It has to stay put because of the historical design that it was blessed with in '63.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brad. What is the, is the property technically for sale? Has the owner, the current owner offered it for sale?
The current owner, I hate to say, is oblivious to the world. He don't care. He don't care. He's the one that suggested to the council that they level it. But then we came in and offered him a more logical way of, bottom line, he's facing major financial upside down. We're offering him a way to save his royal...
Mr. Perea, if you've done your, I understand you've done your homework. How much will it cost for you to acquire the property, pay the liens, and restore the property?
$350,000.
And how much money do you have in hand right now to do that?
We, I got hard-nosed investors that'll bring up at least $400,000. And then, on top of that, we will add additional investors. It pretty much is going to be up to whoever our end buyer is to take it from there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, Brad Moran, and followed last by Tad Nemensky. Mr. Moran, welcome back.
Mr. President, counselors, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. I'm Brad Moran, and our company owns and operates those TV stations that operate in there. And I'm here to encourage you to pass this bill, R. 19198. Our connection to this location goes back to 1964. My dad built that building. And now I'm here encouraging you to mow the building down. It is, it is an eyesore. It is a problem of safety for our neighbors and our employees. And I can't tell you how many times we've called the police to come out there and resolve a problem. In your packets, you have a list of, I believe it was 13 different businesses, 16 different businesses that have signed. Businesses like Walmart, Pima Medical Institute, Old Navy, Dollar Tree, national businesses that have said, "We want this torn down." That's a vibrant commercial area, and by not tearing it down, it's degrading the area in a significant manner. And I would hope that you could help us protect that. We have property rights as an owner next door to that. And I will tell you that the owner of the land next to us is oblivious to what's going on. But the best thing I heard tonight was, he asked the council to tear the thing down. Let's follow through on his wishes. He owns it. Our opponents, they have not come through with anything. There's not any firm plans. When I first heard about this effort to try and save the building on October 27th, I called and talked to them. And since that time, there has been no definitive plan, no proof of financial ability or sustainability, no estimates even to repair the building, and no contract to purchase it. So thank you very much.
Counselor Gibson, then Counselor Jones.
Okay. Mr. Moran, I understand that this is at least the second time that you've flown in to Albuquerque from your home out of state in order to deal with this property. So thank you for being here and talking, talking about it with us.
I'm happy to be here, and I will add that I am a graduate of Sandia High School and have grown up here.
All right. So I, you know, thank you for doing that. But I do have a question for you, since, you know, you've been there for quite some time. And it sounds like you have had communications with Mr. Sanchez, the owner.
Yes.
Has he ever indicated any ideas or plans that he might have for that part of the property?
I approached him about buying the property and never, he said, "I just couldn't do that. I couldn't sell it." I do understand that he has a large lien on it. It's, he's upside down, and it's worth a fraction of what's owed on it.
Oh, that's sad. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Jones, and then Counselor Borrego.
I just have a question, sir.
Yes.
In looking at the packet that was distributed this evening, I have various, I have, my sentiments go out to this neighborhood. But I do have a question about what was submitted here. There are only three owners shown in this packet, and the others are managers of the businesses and otherwise. So I'm looking at the property, and I'm thinking about the ownership of the property surrounding it, and I'm only seeing three owners that signed
I understand that.
Out of 16.
And I do know that there were several people that we had to go back to and ask them, and they said, "Let us get permission from our ownership," and they did come back and sign it. It's the exact numbers of how many there are, I don't know, but we attempted to try and make sure that that was very accurate from the ownership.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Hassan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've driven by this property quite frequently. And as much as I appreciate and truly value historical buildings in our city, there's a point at which I think that things become dilapidated beyond repair. And as much as I would hope that this, I think the architecture is really, really neat, or it was. And it no longer is. So I think that we're at a point where it's beyond beneficial to be able to fix it up. And even then, it sounds like it may not actually stick. and even then it sounds like it may not actually stick and stay that way. So I have to say, for that reason, I am in support of tearing it down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. What's that? Mr. Nemensky. Thank you, Mr. Moran.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Nemensky is our last and final speaker, and then we'll go back to council for deliberations. And I think Councillor Jones wants to hear from the Planning Department, or, excuse me, Councillor Gibson wants to hear from the Planning Department as well. Mr. Nemensky.
Thank you. My name, Ted Nemensky. Just look at what's going on right here with homelessness in downtown. Oh, this is problem all over that city, especially like over there by San Mateo and Cutler. That's my old neighborhood, four blocks from that building. And I rebuilt it from 780 square feet to 3,000 square, biggest house in neighborhood. It's still standing, over three years ago. So now, I am disagreeing because, look at Ed Garcia, what he's doing right here. And he repurposing everything, repurposing everything on John Street. Across the street, that was problem with homelessness. He building fences. Those people spending 20, 40,000 for fence, you can have it off end, this fence. What's wrong about it? Ed put fence everywhere, Ed Garcia, but they slip across the street, all these two tall buildings from Lomas South. So anyway, here is problem with homelessness, not with ownership. Owners, as I understand, doesn't care. He wanted to tear it down. Yes, that is deal with the city. Once, you tear, the city tear it down, speaking tear it down, 25,500. I can do it for half of that. That bunch of, take your teeth right here. Yes, I can do it for 12,000, and I done it myself with the little guys, and I can do it. Well, that is corrupted.
Thank you, Mr. Nemensky.
Benton and so on.
Thank you, Mr. Nemensky. I want to give the administration a chance to respond, and I know Councillor Gibson, on her bill, has some questions. So, Councillor Gibson, who do you want to go first?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Williams, Director Williams from Planning.
Director, welcome.
Mr. President, councillors, thank you. As reported by the neighbors, code enforcement reports that their concerns can be validated as this property's been deemed substandard and unsafe to occupy since May of 2017. Over those past 30 months, the city has been out multiple times in order to have the property cleaned, boarded, and secured, resulting in approximately $10,000 worth of liens currently against the property. Most recently, nine days ago, that property, the building was found to have been breached yet again by trespassers, had to be boarded back up. The last communication that code enforcement has with the owner was in October of 2019. So since that time, they've received no indication as to what the owner wanted or was willing to do with the property, thus resulting in this proposal for condemnation that's before you this evening. And in the past 12 months, there have been 17 different emergency calls for services. So the fire department or the police department has had to respond in the last 12 months, 17 different times, and approximately twice that many times, code enforcement has been out based on property maintenance issues that needed to be addressed. We'll stand for any questions.
I can't really think of any questions for you, but I do appreciate the work that zoning enforcement and your department have done in handling this property. This has been the subject of APD scrutiny. PRT has been out there and focusing on it. It's, it just seems like a real safety hazard, that the fire, we just saw photograph of the building with flames shooting out of the side of it, and it would, it would be tragic to lose human life over there or other properties, you know. So, so anyway, I appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Director Williams, really quickly, has code enforcement or Planning Department issued an opinion as to whether this building is structurally sound anymore, given the fire and all the other violations?
Mr. President, it doesn't appear, at least at this point, that the building is structurally compromised, necessitating immediate demolition, but there has been significant damage to the building due to fires, to trespass, people, you know, kicking, literally knocking holes in the wall to get into or out of the building. So there is, there's significant damage to the structure.
And, Mr. Williams, if by chance this council does pass this resolution, or this matter tonight, how long normally does it take for the Planning Department to execute it? In other words, to go out and actually demolish it and secure the facility?
Mr. President, the total amount of time is probably four to six weeks. There's some background, there's some paperwork, some bids that need to be secured, things of that nature. So there are administrative tasks that are part of this process. So again, we're looking at probably another 30 to 45 days before we would be at the point where we would be ready to demolish.
And, Mr. Williams, just to clarify, if the current owner during that process were to come forward with an executed contract for someone else to purchase it, to show the ability to do that with the Planning Department, reconsider their request, and come back to the council, or rescind this notion?
Mr. President, yes, is the short answer. Code enforcement seeks compliance. So if we've got somebody that's got a plan and the ability and the willingness to bring the property into compliance, we're more than happy to work with them in order for that to happen.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Brennan, I don't think I have a question. I just wanted, as you might imagine, make a statement. It seems to me, from hearing this now the second time, and nothing has happened beyond what we heard the first time, there is a real danger to the neighborhood with what we have sitting there. And I believe that it would be inappropriate for the city to let this stay in place with no guarantee or no, if the purchases were willing to put up a deposit and guarantee some work completed by X time, I could see why we would probably deal with them and see if they could get something done. But if they aren't, they have a wonderful dream, but I think that the city needs to take care of the people who live and work around there. So, Mr. President, I would, of course, support the raising of this property by the city and get on with making this neighborhood habitable and a place where people want to do business and work and live. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brennan, or Brennan, sorry.
Any other questions from councillors? Any other comments from the administration? Hearing none, Councillor Gibson to close.
Well, I hate to see anybody's property taken away from them. And this is the first time that I have sponsored anything like this in six years. I'm on council now. But this, this is truly a special case in that it's brought a lot of blight onto the neighborhood. This is a part of District 7 that is growing and developing. We have substantial retail, new retail over there, some restaurants, and hopefully more coming. But this is, you know, this is a safety hazard, and I'm afraid that, you know, I, you know, it's time that this building come down. And so I just urge your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, other questions or discussion? Although, hearing none on the motion on the floor, is the motion to approve, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed?
Yeah.
That carries on a 6-1.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, we're going to go back to, did we do our, we did our EC1 approval earlier? Is that what we did? I know we did the rules amendment, I'm sorry, Ms. Clerk. We did the rules amendment to put it on the intermediate action, but we didn't actually do that one yet. So we'll take that up. Councillor Peña, are you ready? Could you take us through the approval for EC1? The mayor's recommendation of Sam Sterling for Architectural Consultants for Heritage Farm.
Yes. You said it all.
Sorry.
So, yeah, I move approval.
Great. We have a motion and approval, and a second for EC1. Any questions from council, any debate, any discussion? We have one person signed up for public comment, though I don't see her. Is Ms. Amato still here? Seeing her, any comment from the administration? Hearing none. All those in, Councillor Peña, you to close?
Yes.
All right, there we go, sorry. We're going to get this down, I promise, before we get done with this. We're swapping roles. All those in favor of EC1, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? That matter carries 7 to 0. We're back with final actions. Councillor Bregault, take us to 085.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is amending the Metropolitan Redevelopment Agency Ordinance, Section 148-4-1, to include in all lease agreements for metropolitan redevelopment bond-funded projects, an annual fee equivalent to 10% of the annual abated property tax on the incremental property valuation, and to direct the deposit of the fee into the redevelopment account. And basically what this does is it establishes a percent that every time a redevelopment bond is approved, it would, 10% of that would go back into the fund. And I just wanted, I don't know if I have a second on that, but, thank you, Councillor Gibson. And I just wanted to point out to you that, and I think Karen Iverson is here tonight also from the Redevelopment Agency, and I, in discussing this with her, one of the issues that I had, and go figure, I'm not in a redevelopment area, but I thought I'd sponsor this anyway. One of the issues that I have is the redevelopment fund is sort of dwindling away as we, you know, create more and more projects in the redevelopment areas. And we do use our funds, our bonds, our bonding capacity. The money is not regenerating itself. And so we're having to take money from our general fund to put into the redevelopment fund or other possible sales of property that we have for redevelopment areas. And so I'm just very concerned that this fund, and Karen, you might want to come up because I have a question or two for you, but those are the reasons that I sponsored this bill.
Thank you, councillor. Before we bring up the administration, any questions or debate from the council? Here, Councillor Gibson.
I'm going to be supporting this bill. I think it's a great idea. I did ask for deferral last time just because I wasn't really clear on it, but since then, I've talked with Ms. Iverson and gotten clarity, so I will be supporting.
Thank you. Councillor Gibson, I mean, Councillor Bregault? For Ms. Iverson, sorry. Sorry, I will get the names backwards.
I just wanted, I just wanted to ask Ms. Iverson a question really quick because I wanted the, I wanted the council to, and the public also, to understand that in a recent IRB that was approved, I believe that there was a fee that was charged as part of the actual contract for the repayment of that IRB. So did you want to discuss that briefly?
Sure. President Davis, Councillor Bregault, it is quite common to charge what is called a payment in lieu of, or a fee on various bond programs. And one of the points on the IRB for the Kairos project was a 15% payment in lieu of taxes or fee. So this fee is a 10% fee, so it's less and in line with what fees are normally for bonds.
Thank you, councillor. Councillors, other questions? Councillor Benton?
For Ms. Iverson, how, roughly, what would we expect would be generated by this with our current holdings?
President Davis, Councillor Benton, this would be generated based on the number of bond applications that we get, so it's hard to exactly predict
Yeah.
the rate of new bond applications. Hopefully, there'll be a lot of them because we'll have a lot of development in the City of Albuquerque. But historically, over the past 16 months, the council approved five different MR bonds, and had we had this fee on those, it would be generating $250,000 a year for the Metropolitan Redevelopment Division.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Benton?
Yeah, just to follow up, yeah, I just want to appreciate Councillor Bregault for bringing this forth, even though she doesn't have any MR areas in her district, but I know that they're dear to her, so seems like a good idea.
I agree. Mr. Al, any other comments from the administration?
I heard your support.
Thank you. Councillor Bregault to close.
Ditto.
Great. Motion on the floor to approve, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? And that item carries. We have already done items C, D, and E earlier in our economic development discussions. We just did item H. And so, Councillor Peña, we're coming to you now for the CIP program.
Thank you, Mr. President. R-218 is amending the adopted capital implementation program of the City of Albuquerque by approving new projects, supplementing current appropriations, and changing the scope of existing projects. I move a due pass. And then we have some amendments, and I think you're taking care of those.
It's up to you, ma'am. You want to carry yours, or you want me to just start from the top?
Start from the top.
Great. So councillors, Mandy's passing out our amendment packet for this. Amendment A that I'll move is floor amendment number one. Make some adjustments to the lodgers tax fund that we passed earlier this year to clarify the final location. And so I'm just going to read the pieces into the record. The floor amendment number one says that on page 5 and line 9, insert the following under DMD miscellaneous, "The multi-use soccer facility, lodgers tax fund," it says, "The scope of the project is amended as follows: To plan, design, construct, furnish, and equip a multi-use soccer facility. To include a potential USL practice facility at a site near or adjacent to Mesa del Sol complex." And it adds a new project, which is the indoor sports complex, funded from 1.5 million from capital surplus, "To plan, design, construct, and furnish and equip an indoor facility, and outdoor soccer fields at a site adjacent or near the Jennifer Riordan Spark Kindness Sports Complex." Councillors, the point of this was to clarify where the final location of the practice facilities in the lodgers tax would go, and this seems like a good compromise that allows us to move forward about an indoor and an outdoor facility at both locations, as the public process working with the administration and the community has shown us that there's a need both on the east side and west side for this, and certainly enough interest for. So I'll move floor amendment number one.
Second.
And a second from Councillor Jones. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Councillor Bregault?
So this doesn't say...
This doesn't say that it would be going in a certain area, or it does. It says Mesa del Sol Sports Complex. So I'm just wondering what, what the legislature is going to do, and if this is kind of, sort of premature without us knowing, or is there a timing issue involved?
Councillor Bregault, thanks for that question. We think there is a timing issue. There've been a number of conversations, both here in council, the administration, as you might remember, the mayor sent out a letter to potential partners, including the county, the New Mexico United, Mesa del Sol, and others, asking for those parties to put other money on the table if we approve this piece. There are some legislators who have expressed an interest in also supporting this project, but what we found is that the community need is both for soccer fields for community use and indoor facility on the east and west side. And so this would allow both of those to move forward and to be in legislation so that legislators could attach capital outlay to each project. Failing to do that puts us in jeopardy of not being able to ask for capital outlay. Any other question or comment? All those in favor of floor amendment number one, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? That item carries. Councillor Benton, number two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move, this would be floor amendment number two. It's labeled B in the packet. And this amendment would approve the grant application, appropriate funding for a $1.2 million grant from the U.S. Economic Development Administration for utility extension and streetscape improvements at the rail yards. And so it really adds in the language about the attached application, which you see in the packet. And in the event the grant is received upon execution by agreement with the parties, the amount of 2.4 million, consisting of 12, 1.2 million from the Economic Development Administration and matching funds, a 1.2 million from the state of New Mexico would be appropriated to DMD capital acquisition funds for these utilities and streetscape improvements.
Second. So, there's a motion and a second on floor amendment number two. Any discussion or questions? Any comment from the administration? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? That item carries. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move floor amendment number three. This is just clarifying a bit of some items that were already in the program. And this is, reads on page six, line five, after the term Elvato Casa Grande Redevelopment Program, insert the following, two hundred thousand. On page six, after line eleven, insert the following, Explora Museum Cradle Through Career, a hundred thousand, and Old Town Biopark Pedestrian Connectivity Project, one hundred thousand. And this amendment would reappropriate funds from the completed project to capital improvements for Explora and pedestrian access from Old Town to the Biopark.
Second. And a second from Counselor Gibson. Counselors, any discussion? Anything from the administration? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? That item carries. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is simply readjusting some of the things in District Eight. On page two, after line twenty-nine, insert the following, DMD miscellaneous, District Eight Capital Projects, fifty thousand dollars. The scope of the project is to acquire property, plan, design, construct, furnish, and equip capital projects that benefit Council District Eight. On page ten, after line two, insert the following, that the following amounts are hereby adjusted to the following programs for fiscal year 2020. Council Services Department, Council Services, delete fifty, remove fifty thousand dollars and put it in Department of Municipal Development, transfer to Capital Acquisition Fund, renumber subsequent sections accordingly. This amendment will transfer fifty thousand dollars of counselor-specific funds appropriated in R nineteen two eleven to the Capital Acquisition Fund for use on capital projects that benefit District Eight. I move approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any comment from the administration? All those in favor of floor amendment number four say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? That item carries. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just, again, making clear what some money that we have is going to be used for. On page six, after line twenty-five, insert the following, Foothills Command Improvements from seventeen nineteen seventeen twenty geo-bond, or nineteen seventeen geo-bond, remove a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and put it in the James Dwyer Substation Improvements. This amendment will transfer a hundred and fifty thousand of unused capital funds appropriated for improvements to the Foothills Area Command, which we've already finished and it's done, to the James Dwyer Substation Improvements Project. The Dwyer Substation Project is in need of supplemental funds to complete a shade structure on the site. Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Anything from the administration? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes to floor amendment number five.
Yes.
Any opposition? That item carries. Counselor Pena.
Thank you, Mr. President. On page five, after line fifteen, insert the following, surplus capital fund balance, one point one million dollars. Westgate Community Center Fund Balance, add one point one million dollars. This amendment will appropriate one point one million dollars of the surplus capital funds to the Westgate Community Center Project. The funds will supplement existing funding of approximately seven point two million dollars. The total amount needed for completion of the project is nine point seven fifty.
So, that gets you close?
Second.
And a motion and a second for floor amendment number six. Any discussion? Anything from the administration? Hearing none. All those in favor of floor amendment number six say yes.
Yes.
And that item carries. We are back on the bill as amended. Counselors, other discussion? Hearing none. I'll make a motion to move, recommend a due pass, or to do a due pass on the bill as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anything from the administration? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? And that item carries. Thank you very much. Counselor Gibson, item K.
Oops. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move a due pass on the resolution R nineteen two two one, establishing that the city should not collect and should withdraw any demands for collection of any fees and costs associated with lawsuits relating to its investigation of the death of Attorney Mary Han.
Second.
Do we have any public commenters?
We do have one person for public comment, Mr. Tad Neminski.
Thank you, my name is Tad Neminski again. And, well, I'm looking at a little group right here. Dave Seeding, Jones, and Benton. Real estate icons. Okay, let me go to the issue. Attorney Mary Han, let me refresh your memory. Attorney Mary Han was found dead. Tragic and mysterious. Tragic and mysterious, of course. Now, let me summarize. Investigating.
Mr. Neminski, if you'd back off the microphone a little bit, it won't do that feedback. Thank you.
Investigation connection have been controversial, of course. We know why. Everybody know. It was highly publicized by Albuquerque Journal, too. Where was Mayor Berry that time? Nowhere to be found at, of course. He traveled. Everybody from Mayor's office stumped over evidence. Also, ATD, from chief down, destroyed evidence. This case went to federal court. Well, that another thing, five thousand, no, just being nice to the city. What a crap. I don't trust any judges, district court, neither federal court judges. Lawyers are corrupted. Judges are corrupted in this state. This first judicial district, I said it again, are corrupted, and civil cases, when it comes to civil cases. So, anyway, wake up, Albuquerque.
Thank you, Mr. Neminski. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you. Maybe we can hear from our staff counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counselor Gibson. So, this resolution lays out facts related to the history of the investigation of Ms. Han's death, which occurred in 2010, and it lays out that the medical investigator for the state of New Mexico originally listed her death as a suicide. However, after some various court actions in our state courts, that was changed to undetermined because it was determined that the investigation that resulted in that conclusion was not sufficient for that conclusion. And so, what the resolution states is that, based on the history of this case, that it be in the best interest of the city of Albuquerque and its residents to not pursue the collection of attorney's fees or costs resulting from any lawsuits it has defended or is defending related to that investigation. So, it states a intent of the council, if this bill were to be passed, about what this council believes would be in the best interest of the city and its residents.
Counselor Gibson.
So, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Melendez. So, this is, was deferred for, until today, from our last meeting and the last time we And so, not much has changed. We are where we are. This was also a very similar resolution was before this body, I believe it was in 2015, and it passed. It passed through council. Mayor Berry, at the time, did choose to not sign off on the bill, and it was vetoed. And so, this is the second try for this. My intent here is to try to offer a small semblance of comfort and an olive branch of sorts to the Han family, and I would appreciate your support on this, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Jones, and then we'll go to the administration. Miss Nyer, or whomever.
Sure. Thank you, Council President Davis. I just wanted to, I know we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, and I wasn't present, but just wanted to reiterate that our concerns about this bill don't have to do so much with the merits of the case, but rather with a couple of other issues, one being the leverage and the ability of the city to settle this case, which would be both in the long-term interests of, you know, everyone involved, but also, we feel we have a duty to safeguard the resources of the city that this resolution would compromise. Also, just sort of the appropriate role of letting the legal department and risk management sort of do, do what we hired them to do. So, I know you've gotten a briefing from Ms. Hults, and she can answer any other questions. I think she's answered a number of the questions that came up last time, and I'll leave the legal stuff to her, but that's our concern from a policy perspective.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselors, other questions? Hearing none. Back to Counselor Gibson to close.
Again, I urge your support.
All those in favor of R two two one say yes, and raise your hand.
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed? That item fails on a three four. Thank you. Next up, Counselor Benton and Counselor Jones.
This is, you know, it's time to readdress the IDOs and the voluntary zone conversions. And this is simply, we've discovered that there are enough coming up that we don't have enough in the budget anymore, so this is, resolution will appropriate fifty five thousand dollars to the Planning Department for the Phase Two voluntary zone conversion process. And they will be used specifically for property boundary surveys, where the city requires accurate data to draw the new zoning boundary. I would move approval.
A motion and approval, a motion for approval in a second. There's any public comment for this? Anyone signed up to speak? Any comment from the administration? Any questions or deliberation from the council? Hearing none. Sponsors to close.
Urge your approval.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? That item carries seven to zero. Last up is Rules Amendment RA six. This amends Article Two, Section Four of the City Council Rules of Procedure to establish the Public Safety Committee as a standing committee of the city council. I move a due pass.
Second.
There's a motion in a due pa, excuse me, there's a motion and a second. Before we get to an amendment, is there anyone signed up to speak on this item? So, thank you. And so, councilors, we've talked about this at some length in various other meetings and in public. I think it's very clear that public safety is the most important issue in our city, first and foremost amongst most of our constituents, and it is the, not solely the mayor's or the police chief's job to solve that alone, not that they've ever assumed that. We've worked well to do that in adding new dollars and new officers and new strategies to do so. But I think it's also important that, as a city council and as a city, we make a regular appointment to check in on our progress, both to have a presentation on crime stats, on staffing, initiatives, and how they're coming together. And this is a rule amendment that would bring back the Public Safety Committee that was a part of this council before I was here, in the, under two prior administrations. The question that I think we want to have a quick discussion about, and so I'll move an amendment packet, and I can just, I know what it is, so I'll just say it. This would, as written, RA six would set the Public Safety Committee for a standing committee on the second Tuesday of every month, so we would have FGO on Monday, this on Tuesday, and LUPS on Wednesday. There's been some discussion that perhaps we should move, at least initially, the Public Safety Committee to Monday, so that it could be a lunchtime or an early afternoon meeting before FGO, when staff were more available from the public safety departments. And so, that would be an option for us as well, to try a more daytime meeting when we had staff available and had time to do that. So, I'll move that amendment in order to have that discussion really quickly, and then we'll come back to the enacting piece. So, I'll move an amendment that would strike Tuesday, replace it with Monday. But we don't have a second.
Second.
Oh, well, that's fine. Okay. Yep. So, the amendment would change the date of the Public Safety Committee meeting from the second Tuesday of every month between FGO and LUPS, to put it on Monday along with FGO, so that we would have perhaps a lunch meeting or an afternoon public safety meeting ahead of FGO when more counselors were available. So, that's the discussion on the floor. Any questions? Any comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of floor amendment number one say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Floor amendment number one passes. We're back on the rules amendment. Counselors, any discussion on this item? Any comment from the administration, I assume?
Yes, thank you, Council President Davis. I would just ask that this committee keep in mind that the APD reports to the federal court, the Department of Justice, the AMICs, the court monitor, the police oversight board, and the community policing councils, in addition to trying to reduce crime, improve call response, and implement a new use of force policies. So, would just ask mercy on the administrative additional burden that this committee, it would impose by trying to leverage the many other reports and so on that we provide to the public and to those other bodies. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Nyer, and I think, you know, as I think you said, and I don't think the administration's saying otherwise, but it also goes to say the city departments are also accountable to the council. It has to make those decisions and funding options. And so, this makes that, I think, a more permanent place where we have an appointment to do so, and we want to work with the administration to develop that regular agenda, so we have those check-in items, and all have time to do that together. At least, that's our intent, and I know your departments have been great about talking to us about how to do that. So, any other discussion or comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of Rule Amendment Number Six to establish the Public Safety Committee say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? That item carries, and thankfully to everyone involved, there is no further business before this city council meeting, and we are adjourned.